Stephanie, are we good to go? Jackie? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, City Clerk. If you could please take a roll call.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Present.
Member Noonan Camp?
Present.
Member Prang?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Wright?
Present.
Mayor Sierra?
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Agenda item four, there are no study session items for tonight, but there is an executive session. So I'm moved to go into executive session tonight to discuss the sale or transfer of the ground lease on city-owned properties surrounding the Civic Center pursuant to CRS 246402-4A. Present at the executive session are the following persons: Mayor O'Daniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Anderson, council members Chelsea Noonan Camp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, and Kim Wright, City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott, Director of Community Development Brad Power, and Chief Redevelopment Officer Dan Perumba. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will now exit this meeting and reconvene in the community room on the second floor. Thank you.
Check one two two. Check one two 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 two. Check one two two. Check one two two two. Check one two 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 check one two. Check one two two. Check one two 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 check one two two. Two two check one two two two. Check one two two. Check one two 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 check one two. Two. Check one two two four. Checking one two two. Check one two two two. Check one two 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 check one two two. Check one two. Two two. Check one two two. Check one two 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 two. Check one two. Check one two. One two two. Check one two 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 check one two. One two 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 two. Two two. Two two check one two. Check one two two. Check one two two two. Two 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 two. Check one two two. Two two. Two 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 two. Two two. Check one two two. Check one two 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 check one two. Check one two two two. Check one two. Check one two. Check one. One. One two. Check one two two two. Check one two two. Check one two. One two. One two one two one two two two. Check one two. Check one two two two. Check one two one two two two. Check one two 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 two.
Checking one two. Checking one two two two. Check one two two two.
Testing three four. Testing one two. Testing three four. Five six. Testing one two one two. Testing three four. Testing testing. Testing one two three four. Testing testing. It does. Right, yeah. Slowly but surely we're getting there. Testing one two testing one two. Testing one two three four. Yeah, today is September third two thousand twenty four. Um it's a Tuesday day after Labor Day. It's about uh. Six thirty. And I am talking. Testing one two testing one two three four. Testing. Testing testing testing. Testing one two testing one two. Testing three four testing three four. Testing testing. Test test test. Testing hello can you hear me? Testing. Audio test. Testing one two. Three four. Five six. Testing testing. Testing three four testing. Five six. Testing three four five six. Testing testing.
Check one two one two two two.
Check 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 one two checking. Jackie has a sound back there. Good? Sound good, Eustace?
Can I switch anything else? Check one.
Check two three checking checking.
Check one two one two. Check one two one two. Check one two one two. Check one two one two.
Checking one two one two. Testing one two. Testing three four. Testing one two three four. I.
Testing.
Test, 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 test.
Yeah.
Yeah. Matter of fact, I have someone else. The rush on her. I just hope it makes sense. My little thing. That new girl. When my neighbors be down and their dogs out. Around the whole. And that hurt. All in this. And it's. She should. I don't know. Did you guys?
Yeah, I just turned it off. Should do the trick.
Yep, testing.
It's fine, thank you.
Yeah, your, uh, my tenant got my name today and maybe the most office. No. The next.
Hmm.
That's. Turn it off. That's. That's all. If it works. That's. It's been a little bit too slow.
You want to.
So.
Don't.
So. Which I don't feel. It's.
Well, I am so. Really?
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. To your lady. No. She had this. Yeah, so it's just. It's just fun now, I think that's. Yeah. Okay. There's a spark. Super. It's really. So we can have our team. And work. Yeah, it's just nice. So. Yeah. But she just needs to figure out. And she needs, she can't find her. Yeah, they have a ton of them. It's just his secondary. He finds like four or five. I don't know. Okay.
Security. Does he realize?
I brought mine. No one might have to run through on that.
Right, I know.
Thank you.
And I may have to.
I may spill coffee on it.
Meet with them separately on that because I still don't. I still don't understand like why. Why would there be an impetus to actually turn away? Why? Why there would be any reason for us to actually turn away? Like I thought that he said that, that it would.
All right, everyone, we are back. The time is now seven P M. and the executive session has been concluded. Present at the executive session were the following persons. Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Anderson, Councilmember Chelsea Nunenkamp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, and Kim Wright, City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott, Director of Community Development Brad Power, and Chief Development Officer Dan Perumba. I move to close the executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Nunenkamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the offense meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. All right, everyone, before we move to agenda five, do you guys mind if we take a five minute break? Uh, and, and we will begin at seven oh five. Perfect. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are now back. We're moving on to Agenda Five A. This is minutes of the regular city council meeting from August nineteenth. Any changes to the minutes from the meeting on August nineteenth? See, none can I get a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from August nineteenth?
Move to approve minutes from August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four?
Thank you, Member Prang. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonencamp. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Five B, this is minutes of the special city council meeting from August twenty-sixth. Any changes to those minutes? See, none can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty-sixth?
Move to approve the minutes from August twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonencamp. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to recognition, we want to recognize, uh, Tim Dodd, uh, for being awarded the twenty twenty-three Assistant of the Year from the Colorado City and County Management Association. So congratulations, Tim. Uh, Inglewood City Council would like to recognize Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd for being awarded twenty twenty-three Assistant of the Year from the Colorado City and County Management Association. Tim was recognized by the C C M A for his ability to create and improve upon a number of municipal programs and services that have increased the efficiency, saved city resources, and improved the effectiveness, uh, service delivery to our residents. Tim has been the city's point person for important initiatives of the city such as emergency management, homelessness, dis- um, dissolution of E F, uh, the impact fees, and the city's strategic plan and revised C I P scoring system. In these and other roles, he has engaged in thoughtful planning from, for these efforts, and then executed on these plans to address some of the city's most pressing challenges. On the organizational development front, Tim established the city's internship program, which now employs a dozen or so interns in almost every department in the city, uh, creating the city's language pay program to identify individuals who speak languages other than English, and help improve service delivery to those residents. Uh, he also created and implemented an exit interview program to have the, help the city improve employee retention and job satisfaction. Tim has also established key programs in the city, including the city's sustainability program, the passport services program, and the creative crosswalks and signal wrap program. So please join me in thanking City Manager Tim Dodd for his many contributions to the city of Inglewood and the entire community. Congratulations again, Tim, on, on the well-deserved award. Um, I have a certificate here for you, if you wouldn't mind just taking a picture, uh, up above. Um, City Council, do you want to join me as well in taking a picture with, uh, our Deputy City Manager? Thank you. Sorry about that. And now recognition of public comment. Public comment will be, uh, will begin shortly after seven P M. This is an opportunity to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. And please limit your presentation to three minutes. Um, we are asking Inglewood residents to provide your address or cross streets. Non-In- non-Inglewood residents must provide the name of their city. If you have addressed council in the last ninety days, you will be moved to the bottom of the list. Written materials may be submitted to the city clerk in advance of, in advance of the meeting. And audiovisual materials must be submitted to the city clerk by five P M. on the Thursday prior to the meeting. And so public comment will be limited to a total of ninety minutes for tonight. Uh, I believe we have five speakers here tonight. Uh, Christopher Cordova is here to speak with no topic given. Good evening, Mr. Cordova. If you could just state the city or your cross streets if you're an Inglewood resident?
I live in the city of Denver. I'm going to read some of the article written by Steve Ward in the Inglewood City Magazine. Recently, our city council meetings have seen disruptive public comments from an out-of-town First Amendment auditor, including contingent, including contentious statements indic- indicative of personal beliefs. Sorry, I'm having a difficult time here. I'm sorry, I can't continue. I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Cordova. Any questions? See none. Thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Joseph De Simone, uh, with no topic given. Hello, Mr. De Simone. If you could just state your, uh, address or cross streets?
Okay, how does this thing work?
Actually, you had it on its green.
Huh?
It's on. Go ahead and just state your name and your address.
Uh, Joseph De Simone, and I live at, in the thirty-three hundred block of South Lafayette Street here in Inglewood.
Thank you so much.
My concern is, I want to know what you think of our city. Because when I drive down two eighty-five, it's nothing but a mess, as far as I'm concerned. We've got trash, we've got weeds, we've got curbs coming apart. It's really disgusting looking, and I, I'm very particular. My yard does not look like anything like that. My, I, my yard is prestige. I, I, I work very hard at it. And it seems to me that if the city, and I know two eighty-five is not responsible of the city, it's the state. Somebody needs to call the state and tell them to get out here and fix our streets. They look terrible. It's terrible. And it, and people coming through from out of town and stuff like that and see this, they think, they don't, we don't care. We just don't care. I care, and I think it looks terrible. It really does, and it needs to be addressed. I know it's probably not on your agenda, but, you know, it's on mine. And, uh, I've, I had a lot of people say that it looks terrible, and it should be fixed. That's my concern. Oh, and also Bellevue, too, is the same way with all the weeds and everything coming up. Uh, and stuff, it just, I mean, you will come to my house, and because I have a seven-inch weed in my alley or something, you will cite me for that. But yet we can, you can have all kinds of crap on major, major streets here, and nobody does anything about it. So, um, that's my concern.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. De Simone. Uh, any questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. De Simone, have you called code enforcement and reported the different things that you've seen?
No, I have not.
Okay. Um, I appreciate that. I, and I'll respond to that in a little bit. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. De Simone, are there specific areas of two eighty-five that you're, uh,
From university all the way to Santa Fe.
So the entire stretch of two eighty-five?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Perfect. And so Bellevue, same thing, just within the city boundaries?
Same way from Broadway to up to around, I think it's Clark, uh, Clarkson, somewhere in that area.
Okay. Perfect.
It's, it's just, I think it's disgusting looking myself, you know? And you can, you can buy my ha- go by my house, and I'll tell you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. De-
You won't find any of that.
Yeah. You answered the problem area, so thank you so much for that. Mr. De Simone, we won't provide a response at this moment, but Member Russell is providing a response to public comment tonight, so she will get to you here shortly. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Up next is Rebecca Kramer, uh, speaking on traffic calming nightmares.
Hello, council.
Good evening, Ms. Kramer. If you could just state your name and address or cross streets?
Yes, my name's Rebecca Kramer. I live at Lafayette and Floyd. And I use Floyd quite often to get through town. Um, we have serious traffic issues with the overdensification and all the apartments and overbuilding that has happened in the city in the last five to ten years, and is continuing to happen. Um, my primary concern right now is the traffic calming that has been put into place, um, from Broadway West on Floyd. We like to call them sticks and blocks. Um, and one, I'll, I'll address a few of the issues. Um, there was an elimination of a dedicated left turn lane into King Supers on Floyd headed west. Um, this is causing backups in traffic, sends sticks and blocks, and an elimination of one of the, the through lane has been eliminated, and there's no dedicated turn lane. The cars actually back up on Floyd to Broadway and sometimes into Broadway. If somebody cannot turn left to get into King Supers, the traffic just piles up behind them. Rather than when there were two lanes, they could go in the right lane, and traffic would flow. Um, another issue is the R T D buses, as they are heading east on Floyd, and they turn right onto a laddy. The, the structure that has been redone to that, um, intersection, there's been a lot of concrete blocks and stuff put in, and more blocks and sticks. Um, since I use it quite often, you can see as the R T D buses are coming up Floyd, they have to actually sit there and wait for both lanes of oncoming Aladi traffic to clear for the R T D bus to go into the opposing traffic lane to actually execute a right-hand turn lane. The same issue happens when there's emergency vehicles such as fire engines and, and other large trucks that are coming north on Aladi and trying to turn east onto Floyd. Um, they can't add, they, there used to be two lanes there, and there was a big concrete island put up and an elimination of the, the turn lane. So it, it's causing a dangerous situation to the traffic flows. I would really like the city to reconsider the sticks and blocks that have been put up and reestablish safe traffic on the street. Am I up? No, I've still got time. Okay, cool. Um, so I just, I think it's time for the city to consider that this is an experiment that went wrong, and it's a disaster. And it, it causes large backups. I took it down here tonight. I'd stop every two blocks and wait for somebody to take a left-hand turn, and five cars pile up behind them. And we're all sitting there choking the city up with exhaust, so we can get along our way. Um, the other issue is, I wanted to thank you all tonight for removing the variance for the code next issue off of the agenda. It only took me two phone calls to realize that the variance that was originally scheduled on the agenda was not the city's decision.
Ms., Ms. Kramer, thank you very much for your time. Yeah. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Ms. Kramer? See none. Thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Kramer.
Okay. Thanks.
Up next is Marcy Brown, uh, with no topic given. Good morning, Ms. Brown. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Yes, it's Marcy Brown. I'm on Cornell Insurance. And I want to talk about this notice that everybody in Inglewood has received. It's a notice about inspecting water service lines. And on this piece of paper that the citizens are supposed to sign to consent for, uh, the contractor to come in and see what kind of water line you have, whether it's lead, galvanized, or copper. The problem that I see is that if we sign this as Inglewood citizens, we are absolving Inglewood, the city of Inglewood, and the contractor of any damages done to our homes. It states plainly on this piece of paper that you want us to sign. So to replace the water lines, it, it says, if they crack our patios, our porches, our steps, our walls, or anything. Nobody's responsible except for the homeowners. Why is that? Why doesn't the contractor have liability insurance? Most contractors do. I never let anybody in my house to work on my house unless they have insurance. So why is it up to the citizens to pay for mistakes by the contractor? And you cannot tell me that, I mean, they're going to be working on thousands of homes, thousands, and you're, you're going to tell me there's not going to be a problem in any of these older homes? My home is nineteen fifty, and I'm afraid they're going to co- they're, they are going to damage my foundation. And why aren't, why isn't the city responsible for that, for the contractor? So I called the utilities department in Inglewood, and I was told, well, the grant did not put liability in its grant. Well, who's the fool who did that? Who did not put that into the, the grant? You expect us to pay? My insurance company, I called them, and they said, you signed this, we're not responsible for anything. And I said, well, what would you do if this was given to you? And he said, I'd sue the city. And I said, well, plenty of people sue the city. They even sue themselves for that matter. And it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that you do not look out for your citizens, that you should be responsible for any damages caused by this contractor. And by the way, when they did come, I couldn't speak to them because they didn't speak English. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your time tonight. Member Russell does have a question for you. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Good evening, Ms. Brown. So when did you get that notice on your?
At least a month and a half ago.
A month and a half ago?
And I mean, it clearly states that nobody is responsible for any damages done to your property. Funny, I pay taxes. Why can't the city of Inglewood do something about this?
Absolutely. I will address that when I respond.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Member Russell.
Thank you for your time tonight, member, or Ms. Brown. Up next is Matt Crabtree, here to speak on ballot titles. Good evening, Mr. Crabtree. You could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Uh, good evening, mayor and members of city council. My name is Matt Crabtree. I reside, uh, Chairman and Cornell. Tonight, I'm here for you, uh, to talk about the ballot titles. Um, obviously, uh, both petitions received sufficiency. We received a tremendous amount of support in the community for this, uh, well over three thousand signatures, and, uh, very positive response from both of the ballot, uh, ballot initiatives that are being proposed. Um, appreciate the opportunity for the city attorney's office to reach out to, uh, discuss some of the ballot title questions. Wish it had been done a little earlier. It's, it doesn't, it seems that this is being done kind of last minute. Um, doesn't give us a whole lot of time to, um, go back and forth on this, or even have any, uh, uh, due process necessarily with, uh, whatever's selected. So, I would like to encourage members of council tonight, when addressing this issue, to name the titles as in accordance with the C R S, which is very simple. Now, obviously, the language in both of the initiatives are very clear in the manner of what the intent is and what a yes and a no effectively is. So, would encourage, uh, the recommended ballot titles that were provided to the city attorney's office. The one for the mayor is charter amendment to allow voters the right to directly elect the mayor. Very simple, very easy, very to the point. Uh, the other issue would be charter amendment to increase the number of required votes by council. Uh, the other issue would be Charter Amendment to Increase the Number of Required Votes by Council When Filling Council, City Council Vacancies. Um, both of those are very short, to the point, very clear. Um, I think it's very clear as according to CRS is what is a yes and what is a no. Um, obviously, the intent of both issues is very clear, as stated also in the, the information in the packet that you received, um, that the intent of the mayor election, and true intent of this question is to allow the voters to directly elect the mayor. Um, obviously, we don't want to extend any additional members of council, so then that would turn the mayor position into an enlarged position effectively. So, um, that's very clearly stated in the, the language. As for the other initiative, um, the, uh, the true intent and core of the question is to have a larger number of council members supporting the replacement choice. Very clear, um, as that being the intent of both of these, there's some mechanisms in the second one that are clearly stated in the language. Um, but the City Council has followed actually historically, uh, with some of the other ones. So, I think keeping it short, to the point, and clear, and following the Colorado statute is a very clear yes or no, which I think is stated very well in the actual language provided. Um, but would encourage members of council to select option B, the recommended language that was provided. Any questions? I normally walk away.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crabtree, for your time tonight, any questions for Mr. Crabtree? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Perfect, and with that, that concludes, uh, public comment tonight. Member Russell, when you are ready, you can give a response to public comment.
I want to thank you all very much for coming out this evening. Um, and, um, I'll start with Mr. D'Seymone. Um, I totally agree with the issues that you see, I've not driven by your yard, but I can only imagine. Um, and I appreciate that. I, um, I will be asking, um, a council request to check out those two areas of the city and make sure that they address it. If in the future you would call Code Enforcement, um, there are some options. I, Inglefix is another option where you can leave a message, but, um, I think you're absolutely right, if the city's expecting the citizens to take care of their property, then the city needs to be taking care of their property also. So thank you very much for coming to point that out to us. Um, Ms. Kramer, I thank you very much for coming as well. And, um, I will be doing, uh, council requests on, um, this and maybe having the traffic engineer look at, at the situation that's been created. I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Brown, I greatly appreciate you coming out. We definitely talked about this when we were looking at the ordinance. We definitely talked about, um, making sure private properties were taken care of and the very things that you just said. Um, I would like to get a copy of that, um, thing that you got, if I can, and, um, we will be looking at that because I think that's very important for us to make certain that there is no damage to your homes, especially when we're, um, coming in, um, to look at those things. So I appreciate you coming out, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Crabtree, I also want to thank you for coming forward, thank you for all the work, the hard work that your team did, and, um, we will be discussing this, um, it's the last agenda on the, the agenda tonight. Um, and, um, hopefully you'll get the outcome that the citizens deserve. I appreciate you coming forward, thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell, uh, Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you, Mayor, I just also wanted to respond to Mr. D'Seymone's comments. Um, I am also your neighbor and your City Councilperson, and as the City Manager knows, we have talked about this exact issue many times for quite some time. The challenge, as you noted in your public comment, is that the Colorado Department of Transportation manages 285 as a state highway. And we have been in regular and constant contact with them to come and to clean up the space, to clean the trash, to do the weeds, all the way back last winter I was having these conversations, and they have not been responsive. What I am proud of is that, uh, the City Manager authorized city crews, if the state wasn't going to do it, to actually come in and do some of that cleaning, and we have done some, we need to do more. Um, that cleaning has to happen at night when the traffic can be calmed and our crews can do it safely, which does incur a greater expense to the city. Um, I hope you saw even in the last few weeks, there are some areas that are better. There was a lot of trash cleaned out from underneath of the Broadway 285 interchange and that underpass, but we have more work to do. So, uh, when you come and say, are you looking at this, I want you to know, I think it's an eyesore, I am not happy with it, and we are doing more to fix it. So I appreciate you bringing it up to us. I also hope you can understand some of the complexities of the situation, and, uh, we will continue working on it, but thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, Member Noonan Camp, and with that, that concludes public comment, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Um, Member Russell, I know that you pulled 981, but a question for staff, do we have to? I know there was an email that came out earlier about 983. I think there was a little bit of confusion, we are able to vote on the item tonight, but do we have to pull it off at consent at this point, uh, City Manager?
Thank you for the question, Mayor, and sorry for the confusion on our part. Um, the City Attorney and I had conferred last week, um, about this item when we were told that the city of Glendale was pulling out. The way she wrote the ordinance, if you look at the ordinance, um, the cities are not listed in the ordinance, so it really doesn't have any effect on your, um, on your motion. Certainly, if you'd like more discussion about that, I believe we have someone from the county, and we can go ahead and pull that, but there isn't, um, there isn't a substantive change to mention.
Okay, uh, I'll leave it to members of council if they want to pull that item, but at this point, we have 981. Any other items that we want to pull from the consent agenda, go ahead, Member Russell.
Actually, I was going to pull it, but when we got the first email, I decided not to pull it.
Sounds good.
Because I do think we need to discuss this.
Thank you, Member Russell.
And did you say also that somebody's, is here from the county so they can answer questions?
Yes, I'm told Jeremy Fink is here, and he is in fact.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Member Russell, so we are pulling 981 and 983. And with that, can I get a motion to approve 982, 9B1, 2, and 3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you very much, uh, do we have, yes, we do, we have Deputy Police Chief Vance Bender here to answer questions on CB 32. Member Russell, do you have a question regarding the E911 Authority in the city of Inglewood, EIGA, excuse me, go ahead.
So, Mr. Deputy Director Bender, I apologize. Do you have my questions because I, I can look it up?
Yes, ma'am, I do, so, um, tonight, um, here to present the, uh, IGA between the Arapahoe County E911 Authority and the city of Inglewood to use a backup 911 center that they built in the Prince Building of the Arapahoe County Administration Building, uh, for use of all the PSAPs, the 911 centers in the county. Um, uh, that, uh, center is to be used for training purposes and any failures, equipment failures, catastrophic failures for any 911 center. Um, one of your questions was, why are we bringing this forward now? Uh, because, uh, I believe you thought there was some, uh, failure on Arapahoe 911's, uh, part on the Code Red system?
Yes, is this something different?
Completely. Um, this is, uh, uh, I put this on the agenda probably six-plus weeks ago. Um, the, uh, Code Red, RAP Alert, as you would know it as, uh, system failure. Uh, we found, uh, a couple of weeks ago, right after the SWAT training incident, that they had a, what they called a latency issue that wasn't allowing the geofencing to work on their mass communication system. Uh, we were the ones that brought that to their attention, it was a county-wide issue, and, uh, they were able to fix that latency issue within a day or so. And, uh, as a matter of fact, they're going out to RFP for a, uh, new mass communication system for the rest of the county, or for the entire county in quarter four of this year.
Okay, great, and, and was there a reason that in the packet we received the, um, the lease agreement between the county commissioners and the Arapahoe County E911?
From my understanding, it was to show that the, uh, center, uh, will live at the Prince Building for a period of a 99-year lease at a zero cost to Arapahoe County E911.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Any further questions, go ahead, Member Wright.
I do, please. I'm sorry, can you explain the, the Code Red and this county E911, a little bit, the difference between the two?
So the Arapahoe County E911 Authority, um, uh, operates, uh, in the entirety of Arapahoe County and operates, uh, solely to assist 911 centers, uh, with and communication centers, fire, police, uh, emergency management, and, uh, they're funded by a, uh, a tax that's on cellular phones. Um, the Arapahoe County E911 Authority provides the mass communication software for the entire county, which right now is a company called Code Red. And again, they're going out for, um, a request for proposals for a new, uh, company in quarter four because I don't think many of the, uh, municipalities or the PSAPs, the public safety answering points are, are satisfied with, um, Code Red, uh, especially since its last failure.
Yeah, because we, we had two in a short period of time, didn't we?
Yes, ma'am, we, we had two, and we were the ones that brought it to their attention, it wasn't working. Arapahoe County had at least one, and they believe it was caused by some issue. They had, uh, notifying residents of the Quarry Fire in Jefferson County and, uh, something to do with the software, and that's what, that's what we were told by the company.
Um, so, several failures then, okay. Um, so if I understand correctly, this on South Prince Street, what I was reading, if we had a catastrophic failure at our, um, on a laddy, could they go to South Prince and use that as an emergency?
Yes, there's, uh, at least four, four-person dispatch pods in this, or in this emergency center that anybody in the, in the, um, county could use, the phones plug right in, the computer, the dispatch is the same, everything is exactly the same as they were sitting in Inglewood.
Perfect, okay, fantastic, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions for members of council? If not, can I get a motion to approve 981?
I move to approve 981.
Thank you, Member Russell, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright, any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you so much for your time, Deputy Chief. Up next, um, we got CB 40, we have Director of Community Development Brad Power, as well as Arapahoe County Community Development Administrator Jeremy Fink. Uh, Member Russell, you have a question regarding the IGA, or the Intergovernmental Joint Cooperation Agreement, go ahead.
And this may be for the county, why did Glendale and Greenwood Village withdraw?
Yeah, good evening, um, Mayor, members of council, I would like to introduce Jeremy Fink, who's the Community Development Administrator for Arapahoe County, who can address that question.
Thank you.
Excuse me, so we had, uh, multiple conversations, I think, speaking on Glendale's behalf, it's a general preference not to take federal funds. I think we, as a staff, um, tried to reiterate that Glendale is not directly receiving federal funds. In fact, we haven't done a contract with, specifically with Glendale in years. Um, we do provide, you know, a number of, uh, public service contracts that, that benefit Glendale and Greenwood Village, for that matter, residents. Um, almost all of our public service activities are available to countywide residents. But I would say I think it's just a general preference, especially for Glendale. Um, they apparently did not take ARPA funds or CARES Act funds, which are, you know, a huge part of COVID, uh, federal funds. Um, so I think it's, like I said, a general preference not to take state and federal funding.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, and, uh, then, one other question I'm going to ask, in taking these federal funds, um, is there anything that could obligate us in the future to house migrant, um, illegal aliens in the city of Inglewood in any of our housing?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you know the answer to that, Mr. Power?
I would just like to amplify on his, his answer in that these funds are exclusively used for our en- energy efficiency Inglewood program, which is only available to Inglewood homeowners who are income qualified. We plan to continue that program with these funds for the next three years.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I think that, um, answers my questions for right now. Thank you.
Actually, uh, Community Development, um, Director Brad Power, are, are we? Did we get approved for $200,000, so it used to be about $130,000, right?
Over the course of last several years, we've received about $150,000 annually. We have asked for $200,000 in this next appropriation. We don't know yet whether or not that will be the case, but we've asked for $200,000 to be able to in- increase our assistance to homeowners.
And we normally utilize the entire amount, we usually have a waiting list for the block grants.
We've done some pretty aggressive marketing annually of the projects, we don't currently have a waitlist, but we do commend, we do commit all the dollars each year.
Okay, that's a better way to put it, thank you very much, Director. Uh, Member Wright, go ahead.
I, I just need to clarify, make sure something. Um, is any of this tied to at all the community service bl- block grant at all?
No, uh, so, the existing IGA that you're, you would be voting on is tied to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. There is a CSBG program that the county administers, uh, mainly for senior services like our homemaker and chore.
Right.
Entirely different program.
Right, I'm newly put onto that board, so I need to make sure that I'm not crossing things and not being transparent, so, okay.
If, if I could speak, the, um, so the CDBG program, the home program principally serves low to moderate income residents. Um, most recently, we did a groundbreaking at, uh, Trails at Leehell. That was funded with both county home, uh, just home, sorry, we did not put CDBG into it. Uh, but they, you know, it supports affordable housing development projects, uh, we do public facility, public infrastructure projects. Um, the program, the CDBG program caps public service activities at 15%. Uh, but I know historically, city of Inglewood has supported Family Tree, uh, their House of Hope Shelter. Um, so generally speaking, that's awarded at $20,250. Um, it fluctuates, I would say, between that amount and 25, 30K, um, each year. Um, so there's a, a whole, a whole range of activities that are supported with these programs.
Uh, one other question from Mayor Potem, go ahead.
A question for Director Power on, on the, um, increase. Is, would that go to, would that increase the dollar amount for each individual grant, or just allow us to reach more people?
Uh, it could do either, we could certainly return to you if we get the allocation to discuss that with council, but I think our initial thought was to increase the number of people we could help at the, at the level that we're funding at the moment.
Have we increased that amount?
We have, I think we did it about two years ago.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 983?
I move to approve 983.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang, any further comments? Go ahead, Member Russell.
In the past, I think the last time I voted yes, but I have, um, always voted no since I got in council until the last time about not, um, taking federal funds either. Um, but I do know that this is helpful to the community, especially people that can't afford this, and as long as our money is only going to this, um, I, I will support this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Mr. Fink, thank you very much, thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much, Director Power. Uh, no public hearing items for tonight, we're moving on to 1181, we have Parks and Rec here tonight. Director of Parks and Rec Library and Golf Christina Andre Hill, Deputy Director, uh, Brad Anderson, Open Space Manager Adrian Torres, here to talk about the IGA with Arapahoe County regarding accepting a grant for Phase 3 of Bates Logan Park. Good evening, Mr. Torres.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, uh, I'm Adrian Torres, Open Space Manager. We're here tonight seeking approval by ordinance authorizing an IGA with Arapahoe County. In July, Parks Rec and La- Parks Rec Library and Golf was rew- awarded a $600,000 grant for Phase 3 at Bates Logan. The project consists of two bicycle courses, uh, two bocce ball courts, and this will complete the irrigation system. Funding for the project, uh, this is from our engineers estimate, uh, project totals, little over 1.1 million. 600,000 from the Arapahoe County grant, uh, our total match is 522,000. The matching funds are all coming from the Open Space Fund, uh, the grant matching project, 414,000, and, uh, irrigation system replacement, 108,000. So, at this time, we'd like- So at this time, we'd like to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torres. Any questions for members of council? So, Mr. Torres, I guess I'll start with one of the questions. It's like, when would Phase 3 begin?
So as you know, we're kind of a year behind in these projects, so Phase 2 is starting now. So Phase 3 hopefully can start next summer.
Okay. So to be sometime next summer. The current park or the Phase 2 is slated to be completed somewhere around October, November, correct?
It'll actually be open next spring.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It's gonna go through the, okay.
Yes.
So that timing, I had that way off. So I'll ask this, because I can't tell from the pictures. I know that the removal of some of the trees was a big issue
Yes.
with Phase 2, but some of them are gonna be coming back. They will be repotted back in Bates Logan at some point. But are there any trees being expected to be removed from this Phase 3 project?
Yes. For Phase 3, there'll be three trees removed, and we'll have 12 trees planted.
Okay.
So with Phase 2 and Phase 3, we will add 32 trees to Bates Logan.
Okay. Are they part of the bocce court or are they part of the bicycle court?
They're more towards the bocce ball court.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks for the answers, Member Russell.
Thank you. So is there a timeframe on when we have got to complete this program?
We have two years after we receive the grant to complete the project.
And so, when will we receive the grant money, right after we approve this?
Finance asks for reimbursement at different times during the grant process or the construction process.
Okay. And so the time begins, the two years begin at the time we take the first payment?
The time of the two years begins after the second reading.
After the second payment?
Yes, after you guys approve the IGA.
Oh, okay. All right, second reading. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You bet.
All right. Any further questions from council? Go ahead, Member Prang.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand, because I wasn't around when all of this started. So can you just explain to me the difference between the percentage and dollar amount that's required for the match and what we actually budgeted? Because it seemed like we budgeted quite a bit more than what, it's on page 253 of our packet. There was a table that shows like the requirement for the match.
Yeah, the match is 25% minimum. And we, over the years, have saved money in open space to do some more of these projects.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Member Prang, I think, just to, do we budget the entire amount of the project just not knowing whether or not the grant is gonna get approved?
We budget, we get our shareback funds from Arapahoe County and then budget under different projects. Then we apply for the grant. And we look at our budget and find funds accordingly. So we budget with the amount that we receive from Arapahoe County.
Okay. But we pay for it and get reimbursed by the county?
The $600,000, yes.
All right. Thank you for that. Any further questions for members of council? See and none. Can I get a motion to approve 1181?
Move to approve 1181.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? I'll just congratulate staff again on all the work to receive additional grant funding from Arapahoe County for Phase 3. I know when we talked about applying for Phase 3, it wasn't a guarantee that we were gonna get it, but we were gonna push really hard for getting this added as part of just the, obviously, the new features of Bates Logan Park. So spoken to a lot of neighbors. They're very happy about the direction that the park is gonna be going. So looking forward to all the, to all the work that you guys have done in the reopening of Phase 2 here next spring. So thank you very much for the work, Mr. Torres, and thank you very much, staff. And with that, can we, oh, go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I just want to say as well my gratitude. I continue to be on the record as a very big fan of free money. Congrats. Good job. And really excited to see this next year. Thanks.
All right. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you again, Mr. Torres, and thank you very much, staff. Moving on to 11C1, this is the resolution presenting sufficiency and setting ballot title for initiated charter amendments for the November 5 election. This is for direct election of mayor. We have City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle.
Yes, good evening. So I'm here tonight to present a sufficiency on two petitions that were submitted to be on the November 5 ballot. With the sufficiency of these petitions, we will need to set a ballot title. And I will be certifying the ballot on Friday, the 6th.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Any questions for Ms. Carlisle? So Ms. Carlisle, you provided us two, or we received two different options. We have option A and option B. So we're only setting the title. That is the only ask of us tonight.
Yes. I believe that when the city attorney's office wrote up the resolutions, there are suggested ballot titles and then titles that we received from the petitioners. So there are two options on the resolutions for you to decide.
And at least for this first one, I think it's for both. Option A is what was drafted by staff, option B is what was provided by the petitioners.
Yes, correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we did need to do them as two separate.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
And we will do that. Perfect. Thank you. Member Russell, did you have a question? I see you leaning right.
I do have a question. Have we ever had citizen-initiated charter revisions in the past? And it probably was before your time.
Yes, likely, definitely before my time, but I would need to verify that.
And have we ever created a ballot title?
We have to create the ballot title.
Okay. I think that that is all the questions I have. I'm really wondering, Mayor, if perhaps we should go into executive session for legal counsel on this issue before we move forward.
Thank you, Member Russell. Well, if you ask for an executive session, so I believe. Yeah, do I have a second on the executive session?
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any questions? I guess, uh... I'm trying to think, because I don't have any ballot language or any executive session language for tonight. So it's just to receive legal guidance on the ballot questions.
Yes.
Correct, Member Russell?
Yes.
And Deputy City Attorney McDermott, that's a legal reason for us to go into executive session, correct?
Yes, under statute, that is a legal reason to go into executive session. If during the executive session, there's a question about whether or not it's appropriate,
Okay.
we can always address that later.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Attorney. Any further questions? All right. Go ahead, Member Ward. Go ahead.
I believe we need to cite the statutory, the specific statutory authority under which we're convening the executive session?
Yes, and for legal counsel, that would be CRS Section 24-6-405... Four, I'm sorry. Subsection B.
24-6-405-4B. Did I get that correct, Deputy City Attorney?
As I stated it, yes. I'm just double checking to make sure I'm citing the right.
Let's just make sure we have it correct before we go in there. So I'll give you a moment, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you very much.
And while she's confirming that, if I can...
Go ahead, Member Wright. Sorry.
Since there are two different items we will be discussing, can we, while in executive session, can we discuss both legal questions? Or any legal questions, I should say, on both ballot questions?
Thank you, Member Wright. The way that I understand it, yes, we would be able to have an executive session for both ballot questions. Go ahead, Deputy City Attorney.
Yes, so that code section is 24-6-402, subsection 4, subsection B.
B as in boy?
Yes, B as in boy.
Perfect. All right. So let's see, we have a motion on the table to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4B. We have a second. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays.
Perfect. And in this executive session, I believe we would need just Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tim, Joe Anderson, Councilmember Chelsea Noonan Camp, Stephen Ward, Kim Wright, sorry about that, Member Tina Prang, and Member Russell. I was just saying everybody's first names. And Deputy City Attorney Vicky McDermott, do we have city manager in there as well? Or is that necessary? Okay, so just Deputy City Attorney McDermott. All right, we will reconvene in the community room next door.
Actually, Mayor, before we leave, may I suggest that we have City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle concerning this meeting?
Thank you. So I will add City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle to the executive session as well. Thank you. council members Chelsea Noonan Camp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, Kim Wright, Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott, and City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle. I move to close the executive session when I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Alright, thank you everyone. So now we are back to eleven C one. There is no there is no motion on the table, so any further questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Actually, I need a few minute break.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene here about eight twenty. Alright, the time is now eight fourteen and the executive session has been concluded. Present at the executive session are the following people: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tim, Joel Anderson, council members Chelsea Noonan Camp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, Kim Wright, Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott, and City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle. I move to close the executive session when I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Alright, thank you everyone. So now we are back to eleven C one. There is no there is no motion on the table, so any further questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Actually, I need a few minute break.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene here about eight twenty. Alright, the time is now eight fourteen and the executive session has been concluded. Present at the executive session are the following people: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tim, Joel Anderson, council members Chelsea Noonan Camp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Stephen Ward, Kim Wright, Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott, and City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle. I move to close the executive session when I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Alright, thank you everyone. So now we are back to eleven C one. Any further questions on the resolution for setting the title regarding the direct election of mayor? Alright, see no questions. I know that there's a couple of options here, so when we make the motion, can we make the motion with the option that is preferred? Is that correct, Deputy City Attorney? Is that the best way to do that?
Yes, that would be the best way to do that. You would move stating which option. And just to provide some additional guidance, so State Statute thirty-one dash eleven dash one eleven subsection three states that in fixing the ballot title, the legislative body or its designee shall consider the public confusion that might be caused by misleading titles and shall, whenever practicable, avoid titles for which the general understanding of the effect of a yes or no vote would be unclear. The ballot title shall correctly and fairly express the true intent and meaning of the measure.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Attorney. So, can I get a motion?
Can I ask a question too?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't think of it. The question that I have, so the ballot language itself that we're talking about right now, there's the ballot title option A, and then ballot title option B. Then the wording under that is the actual ballot language. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's what was circulated by the petitioners.
Okay. And that would be the ballot language regardless of which option we choose?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell.
Wait, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Member Ward.
I just want to clarify that most recent statement. Member Russell said that would be the ballot language, but it's not the ballot language. It's the language that goes into our code.
It would be the ballot language that we're talking about, the title. The language that goes into our code. I mean, we would need to amend those charter sections.
All, all right, can we please vote on option A for eleven C one?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay.
Thank you so much, moving on to eleven C two. This is resolution presenting sufficiency and setting ballot title. For initiated charter amendments for the November fifth election regarding the appointment of vacated positions on city council. City Clerk Stephanie Carlisle, anything that you would like to add?
Nothing new to add.
Thank you, um, any questions for members of council regarding eleven C two? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Oh, sorry.
I, I don't have a s- a question, um. I do have something to say though, um, I'm not sure why we're not going for option B. It was the citizens initiative, um, the citizens are now with option B. They're the ones that have requested this wording, it is. It is their initiative, it is their initiative to lose by the writing, so why do we not put this forward? Um, so that's the option that I, I feel that we should put forward. Um, you know, they've done the work and. That's the option that I support, thank you.
Thank you, Member Wright, uh, Member Russell?
Was that on the previous one that you were talking about, or you're talking about the current one now?
Actually.
Okay, okay, I, I actually do agree, um. With, um, Member Wright, um, I. The, the question that I have on this one, it seems like the staff, uh, drafted. Amendment is more wordy than the citizen and, um. I think on this one especially, I think there wasn't a whole lot of difference on the first one, although they did work on it. They worked on it for almost two months, uh, talking to over three thousand people. Um, and getting all the signatures and they were asked questions, uh, and that's why they responded. Uh, I think that if we go ahead, uh, especially on this one, I think I didn't see that much difference, that's the only reason I approved. The first one, um. I would like to consider what they are asking for on, on the second.
Thank, thank you, Member Russell, before we make a motion, let me see if there's any other further questions from council. No further questions, alright, can I get a motion, uh, regarding eleven C two?
I move, um, to approve ballot title option B for eleven C two.
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell, and second by Member Wright, thank you so much. Any comments for members of council, Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be voting against this, um, I think that the change of. Now requiring an election, a special election after the thirty days is very significant, that will be new cost for the city. Um, even though we've maybe done that in the past, we've gone against our charter in the past, this is a significant change to the charter, I do think it should be in the ballot title. So while it is a bit longer, I actually think it better captures the change that is being asked, and so that's why I would prefer option A. So I'll be voting against this motion.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, Member Pring?
Thank you, um, I just wanted to comment in general on my thoughts on how to approach both of these, which was to. Um, look at language that was the most neutral, which is, I think, the goal of this ballot title. And I just feel like in the wording of the ballot language that's right above the yes or no. Um, I personally few, feel that in both of these, we don't have neutral language, so I'm trying to go with a, a title choice that. Um, maybe neut- neutralizes that a little bit so that we can get back to more of a, a neutral place in the language that's being used on this. Uh, I'm not sure where I sit on this one.
Thank you, Member Pring, uh, I'll, I'll speak to this as well, so I will be voting against option B tonight. Um, for the same reason that Member Noonan Camp stated, I think just simply there's two changes are being requested by this, uh, by the language. Of the ballot question, so for me pointing out that there are two, uh, changes that are being made is the reason why I'm going to be voting. Uh, against option B, uh, today, so, Member Russell, go ahead.
Um, I, I just would like to weigh in that it may not necessarily require a special election. It, um, and there's been opt- or, uh, situations when this happened. It, this, this wouldn't have happened in the last one because there was a general election almost immediately. And if there's a general election coming up, we don't have to have a special election. So I think that is somewhat misleading, that there will always be, um, a special election if it's not within thirty days.
Thank you, Member Russell, alright, we have a first, we have, we have a motion and we have a second, can we please vote on eleven C two, option B?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Nay.
Let the record show three ayes and four nays.
Alright, thank you so much, um, can I get a motion to approve eleven C two, option A?
I move eleven C two, option A.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, any further comments, uh, Member Russell?
It's becoming increasingly obvious once again that you are all railroading the citizens initiatives and not taking into consideration. What the ci- citizens say, y- you know, you are just dismissing them and that is disgusting.
Uh, Member Ward?
Member Russell, I, I certainly hope you haven't forgotten that I worked in state elections, pers- primarily in the ballot title setting area for over a decade. Uh, I have significant professional experience in what we are currently engaged in right now. Uh, the purpose of this body and our statutory authority is to set a fair and impartial title. Uh, the, uh, circulators of the petition have weighed in on that, they have given us something that they like. But it is not our duty to put the prescribed title that they give us word for word on the ballot. Our duty is to fairly and accurately describe what the initiative does. And I believe that we are capturing that and performing our duty regardless of whether or not we use the exact words that the proponents of the initiative want us to use.
Member Noonan Camp?
I'll also just respond by saying that, uh, my job up here is to vote in the best interest of all the citizens of the city, not just the citizens who are. Promoting this ballot initiative and my role is to ensure that we have an accurate ballot title so that when our voters look at it, they can understand it clearly. And I think that option A is more complete for the reasons I've already stated. So I believe I am serving the citizens with this vote and I'm disappointed by the accusation and frankly, the unprofessional tone to assume that any of us aren't.
Alright, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show four ayes and three nays.
Thank you very much, City Clerk, we're moving on to mayor's choice, I only have one item for tonight, um. I think some members of council, I, uh, didn't speak to them, but I received an e- email earlier, I, I want to say it was over the weekend. Regarding the walk and roll to school day on October ninth, I think some members of council may have received something from, uh, a teacher from Clayton Elementary, but. Um, it's actually pretty good timing because I was thinking about doing something like this across the city and walk and roll to school day. Just seems very appropriate, so I'm not sure if many of you guys are familiar with the concept of a bike bus. Uh, but I am looking to do something like that and the fact that, uh, students and the administration at Clayton. And it sounds like Inglewood Schools as well is looking to promote walk and roll to school day. I am gonna, I'm gonna be reaching out to other constituents, other members of the schools that want to participate in walk and roll to school day. Um, and basically just create a bike bus where we get children, their parents. And take a day to actually walk to school, bike to school and just promote what? Um, what is possible within the city in terms of just providing a safe path to school, safe route to schools. And so I'm really looking to see if other members of council are looking to do this as well, but I'd like to just encourage us to look at this and participate on October ninth. Uh, but I will be looking to do this and I'll probably be reaching out to the schools and City Manager Lewis, I just want to make staff aware of it as well because, um. It does sound like they reached out to other members of staff, but also the police department in terms of promoting this, so. Um, I will be promoting that, I just want to make council aware of the fact that I will be engaging this as well. Uh, Deputy City Manager Dodd, do you have anything to add or?
Yes, Mayor, I was just gonna add quickly that, um, October, as you probably know, is also pedestrian safety month, which is why this is happening. Um, we also, as part of pedestrian safety month, we're planning to do our Vision Zero and traffic calming presentation to you as a study session that month. Um, but also our Public Works Department has been in touch with the school district about some programming and ideas related to the event that you mentioned and maybe some other ideas as well, so. Um, if something council wants to explore, we can maybe do a quick report back to you, um, next week on that.
Yeah, add me to the list Deputy City Manager Dodd, I would like to participate in any way possible regarding just biking to school or walking to school. So keep me up to date on any ideas you have, cause I would like to participate as much as possible, so, thank you very much for that note. Anyone else for council member's choice, uh, Member Noonan Camp?
Just a reminder that this Friday night is the Inglewood High School's community football game, I will be there, I think maybe a couple of us will be there. I was there last year, it was a wonderful experience and a great opportunity to support our school and go Pirates.
I will be there as well, thank you, Member Noonan Camp, uh, Member Wright?
Thank you, um, couple of things, um, last week, can't remember what day it was. Um, Member Russell and myself were able to attend with several members of staff, um, the ribbon cutting at the trails at Lehigh. Huge gathering of so many different groups, I think it's the biggest ribbon come, cutting that I've been to. So it was really neat, we were able to tour, um, several of the apartments and stuff and I'm pretty envious of the closet space actually, so. Um, it, it was really nice to, um, see the affordable housing that they have developed, I believe there's eighty-seven units, eighty-eight. Um, the other thing, um, wanted to announce is Member Pring and myself are having a joint town hall. Thursday, September nineteenth from six thirty to eight. We are doing things, if you want to jump in here a little bit, um, a little bit differently, we are offering a, um, online option. So for those that may not be able to make it, um, they will be able to join us online, if they're cooking for their kids, that type of thing, we'll offer pizza. And then we are putting out, working with communications, we will be putting out a survey, I hope this week. Asking how, um, Member Pring and myself are doing specifically on council and what we might be able to do better, so. Um, we definitely, any council member that would like to join us, you know, we welcome it, it'll be in the community room, so, do you have anything to?
Could you, uh, state that, the day and time again?
The September nineteenth, Thursday from six thirty to eight, oh, and we're gonna have pizza too, so.
Alright.
The community room.
Right next door?
Yes.
Second floor, perfect. Thank you very much, Member Wright, uh, Member Russell?
Thank you, I, I have a couple of council requests and, um, some of them go back to the public comment, um, tonight. So, is it possible, I know Member Noonan Camp said that, uh, we've addressed it somewhat. Is it possible to have, um, city staff drive Bellevue from Clark's, uh, from Broadway to Clarkson? And check out the weed situation because I know a couple of years ago that we cut all the weeds along the Bellevue side. Um, I, I don't know about Hampton, but are there things that we can do to address Hampton as well? And, um, then with Rebecca Kramer's, um, uh, questions about Floyd from Broadway. Uh, down to city center, um, is it possible that we could have? We now have a traffic engineer, I think all of that occurred before the traffic engineer came on board. Is it possible to have the traffic engineer look at that and see if we need to perhaps reassess some of that? Um, let's see, um, and then I, I have a couple of other questions. Apparently our half a million dollar electric train was down again over the weekend, um. Can, um, can, can council find out how many days that the train has actually been down because of heat, due to heat? And what temperature is the trigger point for the problems? Thank you, I think that's it.
Thank you, Member Russell, Member Ward?
I just wanted to revisit something that we talked about at the end of the study session last week and this isn't normally something I do, but I've, I feel pretty strongly that there's room for discussion on this issue. Uh, it's been pending in the pipeline for, uh, I think a couple of years and even was something that my predecessor prior to my appointment to council. Was interested in doing and that is to talk about vacant buildings and the possibility, I'm not. Saying that anything would happen here, but the possibility that the city may want to regulate vacant buildings in some way. Um, we can talk about what type of public policy we would set, what that looks like, what other municipalities do, how much it would cost, whether or not we want to fund it. All of those decisions could be made in a study session, but to kill the discussion without even talking about it. After two years of, of work and the draft ordinance have been drafted by the city attorney, seems odd to me. Um, there are a handful of things that I have said in the past that I'm unwilling to discuss, things like photo red lights, photo radar. Um, in this case, although I, I take a principled stand against those things, I, I would be willing to even barter. In order to have this discussion on, on vacant buildings, um, but unless somebody feels as strongly about. Vacant buildings policies as I do about photo, red light and photo radar, I just don't understand how the discussion got killed and why it's not coming forward for at least a study session.
Thank you, Member Ward, um, any comments regarding revisiting vacant buildings, go ahead, Member Noonan Camp?
I support having a study session.
Alright. Um, I'm in support of hearing it out, I will take you up on photo radar at some point in terms of a discussion point. But no, I, I'd be happy to just revisit it, I know that, um, just understanding what other cities are doing to me is what I would want to focus on. And just see what language they're using today, um, so I'd be happy to revisit that as part of a study session and then go from there, so. We'll try to get that on the calendar, uh, Member Ward, so thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else from members of council, if not, city managers report?
Thank you, Mayor, um, just a couple of thoughts, thank you, um, the communications team was really excited about, um, your ideas, Member Wright and Member Pring about the, um, town hall. And they love the idea about childcare, I'm not sure if that came from them or you all, but I love kind of the inclusive nature of what you're trying to do with online, et cetera, thank you for that. Um, Member Ward, thank you for the clarification on vacant buildings, I didn't realize that the larger discussion you've, you still, you wanted to have, I think staff is more than happy to have that discussion, thank you for bringing it up. We, our only concern was just on that ordinance itself, how do we staff that without a staffing resource? But I think there are lots of other options that we could look at, maybe in addition to that, um, so thank you for that clarification. Mayor, um, I noticed we didn't get it on your agenda tonight, but I think you had said you wanted to talk about the two council members potentially for the police chief's interview process. We can put that on the agenda for next week, but I just wanted to make sure you didn't.
No, it just, yeah, it was a slip up, so, um. Do we want to have a, do we just want to put it on the next step, um, agenda item for two weeks from yesterday? Let's just do it on the, whatever that day is, the fifteenth?
Okay.
Okay.
Make sure between the clerk's office and.
It's not, it's not pending, like, there's, we don't have to.
We've got some time.
We've got time, okay, perfect, so yeah, let's just do it on the fifteenth.
Thank you, the last item that I wanted to bring up is just to update you from your June twenty-sixth discussion, discussion about the National Citizen Survey. Um, as you know, you, um, directed staff to put the previously asked questions as part of that, just wanted to give you an update that, um, that is launching this week. Um, this has been used since nineteen ninety-two to better understand the thought of, uh, thoughts of our community member, starting tomorrow on September fourth. Um, the three thousand randomly selected households will, will receive a postcard with instructions on how to participate in the survey. Um, that's going to be the online portion, this is a scientifically randomized sample to ensure that accurate resident feedback is. Um, that's going to be the online portion, this is a scientifically randomized sample to ensure that accurate resident feedback is gathered from the community. A paper survey will be sent out shortly, but the postcard, uh, recipients, uh, if to, but the postcard will let recipients use that method for online if they prefer to do that. Um, on September twenty-fifth, as in years past, the survey will open to all residents with more information to come, uh, on through the city's communications channel, so we'll be pushing that out, that just won't be considered part of the, um, the scientifically, you know, um, what's the right term, Tim? The scientifically randomized. Yeah, the sample size, thank you. Um, so after the conclusion of the survey this fall, staff will, uh, like to hold a study session with council about the survey and to receive feedback from council on future surveys. I'm glad to answer any questions about that or other topics.
Thank you, City Manager, any questions for the City Manager? All right, don't see any, anything else, City Manager? Nope, all right, actually, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, just because we talked about it, I believe, last week, but it does look like we will be having staff present regarding, uh, conversation on our approach to homelessness next Monday night, so, uh, September ninth, so I think, Member Wright, I can't recall who brought it up, but came from this council, but it will be part of the study session. Uh, all is Member Pring, that's right, so it will be next Monday night, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up because I've already been getting questions on it. So with that, everyone, we are now adjourned, it is before nine PM, that's all you need to know, we'll see you guys next Monday. Have a good night.